All right, we'll call to order the planning board meeting of April twelve, twenty twenty-three. We'll call attendance in alphabetical order. I guess that's me now. So Tom Callahan is here.
Amy Glassmeyer.
Kevin Heine.
Okay, I know that Deirdre will not be with us tonight. Clark's gonna join us in a few minutes. Also with us tonight is Lauren Lind. What do we call you now?
In- interim planner.
In- interim town planner?
Yes.
And our council Carolyn Murray.
And Cassandra. Is Cassandra here?
She's on my list. I needed to change my name. Thank you for the reminder.
I assume that Angela is out there taking minutes.
That's correct.
Thank you, Angela. All right, so I see there's other people here. They're probably mostly applicants, but Lauren, could you just, since we have a few public hearings for the first time in a while, can you just let the public know how they can participate tonight?
Absolutely. Thank you. So for each of the public hearings on the agenda, there will be a designated public comment period. At that time, we'd ask that you input your name and address into the chat function. You can either leave written comment or just your name and address, and we'll promote you to use your microphone and camera to be able to address the board. We ask that you keep comments at a three-minute maximum, and please try to refrain from repeating items that have already been discussed at length. And we will ask you the first time if you're speaking on the microphone and camera to state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lauren. First item on our agenda. Continued hearing of fifty-five South Main Street. We're at the point of making a decision, and I understand we have a draft decision to look over, so Lauren, I'll leave it to you to put it up whenever you want.
Absolutely. So I just need a minute to pull that up, so if you wanna just sort of, if you, if you wanna fill in anytime, it's just gonna take me a moment.
You wanna fill in anytime? No, there's nothing to fill in quick.
I had all the public hearing notices up, but I, I didn't have these specifically up yet.
Sorry. Are you gonna read all the public notices for us?
I can do that, yes. Let me just make sure. Okay, I have, so what we'll do is I will run through the most recent version from Carolyn, and then at the end, we can switch back over to the version that you have sent to discuss those two final points that were edited. Does that sound all right?
Sure. Has anybody else on the board submitted anything ahead of time?
Not that was forwarded to me, if it was sent to Cassandra.
I, I didn't send anything in.
All right, not a problem. All right, go ahead, Lauren. I'll give you the floor to just take us through it.
Sure. So as with any decision document that we have, we go through the procedure. This is a cover page that gets stamped in at the town clerk on top of the decision that you can quickly summarize what happened. You see a lot of dates for this particular decision because we had to re-advertise. So for consistency, we indicated all of the dates that were at, was advertised, including re-advertising. This, I will update, just so you're aware, to include Kevin Heine, as he's a voting member on this application, as the chair indicated previously. So I'll update this page and change it to be according with the votes that take place. We go through general information about the applicant and the proposal. A list of all the applicant submissions on file, the peer review report, a procedural history and background that explains what the site is, what the proposal is, again, through the public hearings. And then the findings. This is where the planning board needs to meet the criteria that this permit meets the series of the bylaw portions that it's applicable to. That's section of the Village Business District that grants the planning board a special permit granting authority. There's a section in our general administration enforcement that talks about special permits, site plan review. And then, in addition, inclusionary zoning is applicable to this site because this is five or more residential units proposed. And then lastly, the, it's not particularly in our bylaw, but it's one of the planning board's rules and regulations that is the Village Business District and Harbor Overlay Design Guidelines. So you can also make a finding there that you found the proposal was applicable with those. And then we have a series.
All right, let, let me just stop, let me just stop there. So has everybody on the board had a chance to look this over? And Carolyn, I don't see any edits from you. I don't, I don't, I didn't have any edits. Is everybody comfortable with the findings that are being made?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, go ahead, go ahead, Lauren, sorry.
Oh, no problem, so.
I wanted to do it just bit by bit, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I just like to sort of run through it first to let you know what the pieces of the document are, but we can go over any of it in greater detail. Then we get here to the conditions section. There's a series of conditions that some of them are sort of a standard template that you would put into all of your decisions, and some have come through the course of this discussion. So I think we should take a little bit more careful time here. And then I'll note just, some of these also incorporate sections of what the last Morse Engineering memo was in suggesting that these things be included. We also had, I see Carolyn's made some edits here, and we have two that we'll look over at a different document with some more language that came from the chair. So. Do you, do you wanna walk through them?
So I mean, the, the, the first, you are kind of boilerplate. That has to be in every decision. I'll just, I guess I'll throw the floor, the floor open to the board. Does anybody have any particular comments about at least, let's say, the first ten, which are probably the boilerplate ones? At least the first ten.
I have no comments. Amy Glassmeyer.
Okay. And now I see we get into some of the more specifics and Carolyn. Oh, okay, Carolyn's note here, Amy raised about soil disturbance. Yeah, I, you know, and I thought about this myself, and Amy, you can jump in, but when we were talking about the work that was being done along the property line with Pompeo's property. And I think just generally some of the soil work and testing, you had some concerns about that, and I guess the point is do we insert a condition about this? Carolyn or Amy or Kevin are referenced in this. Can, anyone of the three of you jump in if you wanna add to that?
This is Amy Glassmeyer. As I was the person who was most concerned about this issue, if necessary, and this is a, a comment to Carolyn Murray, our legal counsel. Is it necessar- in the discussion the last time we met, one would have concluded from the discussion that the engineer provided, that they had already done subsurface analysis that would suggest that there is no vulnerability to collapse and that the soil is compacted enough so that there should not be a concern on the part of the property owners to the north and south of the property. We did not confirm that, but that's what I inferred, so I'm, I don't know what to do regarding that.
Well, my comment was really just directed at going through my notes and some comments that board members made. You're right, we didn't confirm anything with respect to soil disturbance. I was thinking more along the lines of when the site is actually disturbed. In paragraph twelve, we're talking about how, you know, licensed site professional is going to have to report any kind of release and deal with any remedial action. They're simply going to have to comply with that regardless. So whether the release is a result of soil disturbance, or whether it is a, a result of, you know, petroleum release or something like that, you know, DEP is going also, is going to, you know, step in for this, but there was a lot of discussion. Both you, Amy, and, and Kevin had raised ongoing questions about DEP requirements and ongoing monitoring and compliance and remediation obligations. So I just didn't know if the board wanted to make some sort of note here in the decision, that the that we either acknowledge that, that this was discussed and acknowledge, you know, the applicant's ongoing obligation. You certainly don't have to, but as I said, you did devote a fair amount of time commenting on it.
May I suggest that in Carolyn's little note here on the side, where it says the applicant remains responsible for monitoring and testing, monitoring, testing, and compliance with any DEP requirements. I would just take that phrase and slap it at the end of condition twelve.
And, and I might add, I think Carolyn's point is appropriate as presented here, but I wouldn't limit the reporting to the town of Cohasset. I would say something along the lines of reporting requirements as required under the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. Reporting requirements do not necessarily begin or end with the town. Certainly, the town would be a part of that. But the Massachusetts Contingency Plan requires reporting under specific conditions, under specific timeframes, to specific entities. And I think we should just leave it the way it's referenced, and as required by the Massachusetts Contingency Plan should be incorporated into twelve.
It will be Lauren, reported as required, so take the, to the town of Cohasset out. In the previous, yeah, take that out. We, we will be, it'll be reported to us, but it'll also be reported.
I mean, the acknowledgement here, and the reason we spend time talking about this, is this is a former service station gasoline site. There's a long history of these as having environmental issues. This one may or may not have had one that may require addressing in the future, so that we need to be diligent about that. Writing that in here is not unreasonable, and I'd rather have it in, so people are all on the same page and recognize the potential risks here. As this sounds like the buyers and the developers here are moving forward with this, everyone's on the same page as we move forward.
All right, I think that's fine, just after the word monitoring, throw in a comma.
Mr. Chair, the applicant's fine with that, you know, with that language as proposed by Mr. Heine.
Good, all right, thank you. All right, let's move scroll down a little bit. Again, some of these are still boilerplate that get into every project. And was it further down that Carolyn had some language in blue?
It's paragraph eighteen, yes.
Paragraph eighteen, so no short-term rentals for a period of six months shall be permitted in any of the market rate units, and if affordable units are provided on site. Okay. That's just dealing with the contingency that there could be affordables on site, so.
Right, and that there would be absolutely no short-term rental of the portable units.
Right, okay. John, any issue with that?
Can I, I just would like to raise an issue about the future, which is that many people have situations in which they need to have short-term rentals. And that can be one month, that can be six months, that can be a year. And if we confine ourselves to some time-space, I think we need to say what we mean. This is not a very well-defined specification.
Short-term rent, well, I, I think everybody understands short-term rentals being Airbnb and the like, Turbo, Airbnb.
I think you need to be more specific then, because short-term rental is, is, is indistinct. I think it has to be.
What, what other situation are you envisioning? You know, understand, understand that there are a lot of towns who are banning short-term rentals, no matter who they're to, because they don't want
I, that's, that is, that is exactly my point, which is that if you are trying to limit Airbnb types of arrangements, I think at this point, there are legal language that exists to define that type of situation, which is more precise than saying short-term rental, because.
I think it's, I think it's intended to ban all short-term rentals, no matter whether it's through Airbnb or otherwise, and, and I not sure, you know, it's, it's part of a larger policy decision the town needs to make about these things, but I, I, this, this is broad enough to include anything.
Well, it also has the potential to exclude anything. That's my fear.
Yes.
Just one other thought, would this also prevent against subletting to an Airbnb type of arrangement? If I were to lease one of the units and then sublet for a week at a time, does this language protect us from that?
I would say so, Carolyn.
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay.
So Carolyn, can I ask, do you feel the language we're discussing is sufficiently detailed so that we don't have to worry about something in the future that is either impinged by or accomplished by the language we have?
I do think the use of the term short-term rental is the correct one, and it's actually the term that the state uses in terms of, now, the only difference here is that we're talking about, you know, short-term rentals for a period of less than six months versus the state law, it's listed at, you know, I think it's thirty days or less, being a short-term rental. But I, I don't think that that changes anything in terms of the common understanding or the statutory understanding that short-term rental can be Airbnb, it can be VBRO, or it can just be, you know, Carolyn Murray is renting out her unit on a, you know, a weekly or monthly basis just to make some cash.
I, I'm accepting of that. I think that this will be an issue we will bring up as we develop more units that can be rented.
I, I can give you a preview that when we deal with Article Four in the fall, having a definition for short-term rentals and where it would be allowed and not allowed will be addressed, so it's it's being thought about for the, for the future of our bylaw. John Denny, any problem with the attitude?
No problems. I mean, I can understand the board's concern about Airbnbs. Obviously, that seems to be very trendy right now. I think another issue, you know, being coastal community, people are looking for weekly rentals. That's a concern for the town. I understand that. Six months seems long, I mean, but we're fine with that. I just think there's sometimes people are looking for maybe four months, four months. You know, if you're thinking you're worried about people coming for the summer, that's really a two-and-a-half-month period, but just food for thought for the board. You know, I, for, as far as the affordable, you can't rent out affordable unless it's for affordable, so I, I I guess my point is, from our perspective, no, but I, I, I understand your your policy issue going forward. It's an interesting exercise to try to figure out what's gonna be in the best interest of the town of Cohasset, and by the same token, there are people, you know, to avoid that transient kind of like worry and profit method that some of these Airbnbs are doing. But again, it's up to you folks, six months, whatever, whatever you feel is fine with us.
Kevin?
I, I'd like, where did the six months come from, the language that's presented here?
I can answer that. It came from the special permit that was used for the Harbor Village project over at one twenty-four and eighty-seven Elm Street. And the conversation, where six months came from at that point, I'm not sure, but that was, I pulled this to be consistent with that permit. Because that's just the figure that has been sort of used as a previous case, but that same instance was of concern particularly down in the harbor of people wanting to use that location as a short-term rental sort of opportunity.
So I wasn't privy to that discussion. I can't add anything to it. You know, I I don't see the I, I, I don't see necessarily the reason for six months in here. I understand the concerns, but I think having flexibility to owners is understandable. Six months in this case seems to be on the long side, and I would also think there'd be a these would be condominium units or townhouse units or rental units, but they'd all be subject to some management agreement with the overall property management, which I think would be in a better position to dictate that this point than we are now based on what I'm hearing. I, just weighing in here, I think.
Again, there's, there's a larger policy issue that's going to be discussed when we deal with Article Four. You know, and there's a distinction to be made, I guess, between apartments and people renting their single-family homes for the summer. We have to make a decision about that, but to this point, we have frowned upon these kinds of short-term rentals. Many communities are outright banning them, and we're, we're not there yet, but you know, this is expressing a this is expressing a policy that'll go in that direction, but
I'd like to make.
I, I don't think people should have their apartments become commercial enterprises through Airbnb or VRBO or whatever.
Does the town have like tax on it, Mr. Chair? Do you guys, does the town, like I know situat- we, we invoke the tax that anybody buys an Airbnb and rents out after, I, I, I don't know, I think it's three weeks or something. They have to pay tax. That's revenue that goes back to the town. Do you have something like that?
No, not, I don't think we do. We have a hotel tax, but I don't know that.
I say that because you're in the business district, and as opposed to like being in a residential, that would be taxed back to the town, that would be beneficial, but again, you know, sorry.
No, that's a good, that's a good idea to think about going forward for the larger policy, Lauren.
So, thank you. We don't have, we, actually, our bylaws are silent on short-term rentals as it is, so just to Kevin's point, I do wanna echo sort of the sentiment that you're already getting to, and that I wouldn't recommend moving forward that you continue to regulate short-term rentals through, on a special permit basis, because if you ever change and put a bylaw in place, you wind up having special permits that are maybe out of sync with what you're putting into your bylaws, and it makes it a nightmare for enforcement purposes. So that's why, you know, like I just pulled six months from your previous permit to have it be consistent, so that at least for, you know, if, for people in enforcement to be tracking this, it's easier for them. That's, we typically try to do the same with like construction hours and days across permits. So I, if you wanna modify for six months, I don't see a problem with that. I would just recommend that moving forward, you don't continue to change throughout each permit process that you do, and if you do wanna continue to regulate this, you do put it into bylaws that are just sort of consistent across districts or uses.
So based on what Tom said, that is, we are going to be taking this up in the fall. I feel like if we can view this as what we say today, recognizing that a change can occur as we move forward in the full revision of the bylaw, then from the standpoint of effort, I would argue, let's keep it as it is, but recognize that this is the first engagement with the topic, and we will address it as we go forward.
Amy, if I could just ask you to clarify, when you say keep it as it is, you're saying leave the six months in place?
That's correct.
I agree with Amy.
Anything else, Chris? You had raised your hand before she started talking, so.
No, she, she had a more intelligent comment than I did, so she's entitled.
John, go ahead, John Danny.
Quickly, just two points. One is, there are maybe snowbirds, people who fly down for the winter and then come back. You might think about like three months or four months. That way, if they're gone, they have an opportunity. That's point number one. Second point is, I'd also suggest that maybe to Amy's point, six months or subject to zoning bylaw requirements. That way, if it ends up being changed in the future, at least this decision is not gonna mandate its mandatory six months when the zoning bylaws change it, that's all.
Yeah, I, I mean, if about this project and the harbor, if the bylaw allows short-term rentals, and I, I, you know, everyone's making an assumption that would go in that direction, when I think the assumption is the reverse, but you can always apply for a modification of this permit, as can the people at the harbor. And then, and then we will make, you know, apparently, you know, we will deal with the policy decision if we make a distinction between apartments condos in the village and the harbor and single-family homes in RA and B and C, so we'll take, again, that's for the future, but I, I, you know, it's it's certainly not, personally, it's certainly not something I would want to encourage, so I, I, I'm fine with this condition.
Hey, hey, Tom, I, I've been on for the last fifteen minutes.
There you are, Clark.
And heard the, and heard the discussion. Sorry, I'm late.
No, that's all right.
But, but, you know, I think it makes sense at this point just to leave it at the consistent with what we did at the harbor, and as you said, that if they wanna make a modification, they can just, you know, come to the board later. It's, it's a big issue. The, the issue of short-term rentals is, is, you know, it's sort of bigger than, than all of us that
Yeah.
And, and whoever doesn't have any a, any permit language is doing whatever they want, and, and, and new applicants are, you know, have to, are constrained by whatever we think, or maybe the ZBA thinks are. So I just leave it for now. Move on.
Yeah, I agree.
Kevin, is your hand still up?
If it is, it's inadvertent.
Okay. Lauren, I don't see anybody else with a hand up.
Excuse me, I'm not seeing anyone, and thank you, Clark, for alerting me. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. It's tough when I have screen share up to also watch the participant hands.
No worries.
All right, and, okay, so any, anything on the, also on the conditions shown on the screen? Before I ask the more global question about any other issues, let's look at the two conditions that I suggested. Are you putting, you pulling that up as well?
Yes.
All right. All right, so I noticed that the finding about the inclusionary zoning said it was as conditioned below, and then I didn't see the condition, so I suggest we insert the condition that is similar to what we had for the harbor, which I believe was tied to that the units have to exist as of the time of occupancy permits, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'd be more specific here that payment and lieu is not an option, and since when the harbor decision was written, we did not know of the idea of purchasing an affordability covenant on an existing dwelling, which is what the harbor developers came up with as their solution. I just thought we should add that if it's, that's the choice, it'd be permanent. And, and I also had it in here that I didn't want these apartments in the village district, you know, and I discussed that before, that I think it's kind of defeating the purpose of the units we have in the village, but that, that, that's what I offer. I'll open the floor to anybody's thoughts about that.
Could you be clear about what you're stating and you wish us to comment on?
Number twenty-two.
I understand that, and what question do you have for us?
Well. First of all, agreeing that we're putting in the condition that we did for the harbor, that basically will allow them the option to develop units off-site as long as those are in place by the time occupancy permits are ready to be issued before any occupancy permit is issued. And if they're not developed, then they have to be put in the project.
I think it says, the units should not be located in the VB district.
Well, that, that was, that was my thought. So, so the specifics for this project that I would be asking about is number one, completely taking payment and lieu out as an option. Number two, whether the units that are developed could or could not be located in the village district, and number three, that if they do what the harbor folks did and buy an affordability covenant, that it be permanent, which I believe theirs is the one that they purchased this as well.
Yeah, yeah, permanent's okay. I just don't understand why it should not be in the village.
Well, my thought about it was we're we're replacing, you know, in theory, the village apartments are smaller and quote-unquote more affordable, and we're taking away some affordability just to replace it with a different affordability. That, that, that's just my personal view on it. I don't care, but.
Well, I, I mean, I mean, the I, I, I don't see, I mean, if, if they're gonna be a part of this, the project, then they're in the village. So that's a, a conflict right there. If
But those would cannibalize existing.
In their, and they're somewhere else, it seems like that's just as, as good as if they're out on three A or or in West Corner or whatever.
Well, but under the, under the, under the belief that village apartments are going to be cheaper because of their smaller size, we are we're basically just substituting one kind of affordability for. we're basically just substituting one kind of affordability for another, whereas we would keep two apartments in the village that are quote unquote affordable and then have two more developed in a different part of town. That's my thinking.
I just don't understand. I mean, the village and out, out on three A by the train station are the best, the best of locations for, for affordable housing.
Yeah.
Generally speaking.
Except the three A zoning doesn't allow it yet, or at the moment, I shouldn't say yet, but.
Well, let's, let's say the, the project at Old Colony next to the train station, that's, that's a ideal place to, to create affordable housing, but also the village. So I would just take out the, you know, take, take that out. Why, why do you want to not have the affordable units be in the village if that's possible?
All right, that's fine. Uh, Amy.
We could talk about it in more depth, the philosophy behind where affordable units should go ideally and then, and then worst case, we, where we do not want affordable units. So that's a discussion for another day.
Thank you. I agree with Clark's sentiment from the following perspective. We do not want to exclude where affordable housing could go. What we don't want to do is to have all of our how affordable housing exchanges where already affordable housing exists. And what I mean by that is if every time we have a project that has affordable housing requirements, they search around town and find low, uh, cost housing and then just says, we're going to deal with this on in perpetuity, we're not adding numbers. I think the better condition is that we underscore the fact that we are attempting to achieve increases in the, the absolute number of affordable housing units in town.
Right, which, which is my argument for not putting them in the village.
But, but, uh, wait, 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 let me just finish. The, uh, the units that are now being proposed for the village, we don't know what those units are going to cost on the market rate basis. And so we can't require somebody who's building residential units to sub-optimize on the, the rent that they're able to seek if the properties around them have a certain market value. It's, I think we, we can't, we can't do that. I mean, I, I feel like what we're trying to do is say every time somebody builds housing, they are burdened by having to provide um, uh, subsidies for houses in potentially prime locations like the village, where if we move, uh, two blocks away, we might actually find the capacity to build housing that costs less, but also achieves the objective of affordable housing.
All right. And I think that's arguing for keeping them out of the village, but all right, let me go on to Chris's comments.
Tom, I understand your intent with the language. I think the intent makes sense because you don't want to take an existing relatively inexpensive rental option and add this to it where you wouldn't really be adding inventory to the total town inventory of affordable housing. I think the language as you proposed it would achieve that. I just wish there was a better condition to put on it. And frankly, I'm not sure what condition that would be, but on net, I'm supportive of the language as it's currently drafted by Tom, because it does achieve that objective of, while being a little imprecise, it, it gets you there.
Yeah, unfortunately, you don't have the full language that was in the Harvard decision to look at right now, but, um, um, I was, I had another thought in my head, but is there anybody, I can't see with this split screen. Is there anybody else with a hand up out there?
Well, gi- given that, uh, Tom, given that we need a super majority for approval of this project, do we really want to, uh, make, uh, affordable units in the, in the village, which is a conflict for the affordable units being a part of the project built, building? Um, do we really want to make a deal out of this and possibly, you know?
Well, you know.
Three positive vote or something?
No, I the, the, the conflict between this project and other places in the village can, is easily fixed, but you know what? My, my larger problem is now that we've had two recent projects, both looking to find ways out of doing affordable units in their projects. Because of my own personal experience with past projects years ago, the harbor one did not make sense of forcing that project to have affordable units. This one was certainly designed, that should be, but it's unique property. It's got some building challenges because of the stream and I, you know.
Well, I mean.
I'm, I'm willing to concede this, but what I am, but the larger policy issue is we should not be encouraging, we shouldn't be having this debate because we should not be encouraging developers to go look for affordable units somewhere else. They should be putting them in their project.
That's a good point, but doesn't your saying not in the VB district conflict with that? And, you know.
No, it's not because the VB district is existing, the VB district right now, existing apartments, not what's going to be built. Existing apartments are smaller and I assume much cheaper than everything else.
I understand that point, but I just don't the, of capital A and, and lowercase affordability, affordable units that would count on the S H I and affordable units that are a part of the diverse housing mix in the village. I understand that, but you know, we, we've had, uh, we didn't originally have inclusionary zoning as a part of the village. And that, and that wa- the reason was because we were desperate to, to, to create more vitality and in, in, uh, local residents and encourage business in, in the village. Well, now we have it and, and, and we have creative options so that they don't necessarily have to be on, onsite. And, and I think that's a, a, a reasonable response to um, um, multiple kind of shared goals for, for the village and any project that comes before us.
Mark, the challenge is, how do we do that without letting people take existing affordable lowercase A housing options and turn them into uppercase A affordable housing options where it wouldn't really be a benefit to the town?
Well, yeah, if they're on the S H I and they, they aren't currently on the S H I, then that's a benefit to the town, period. Whether the same person rents the lowercase or capital A, uh, unit, I don't know. Um, I just.
But I think, I think Tom's intent is to increase the overall inventory. So if two units in this development were to be affordable, that's an increase in inventory. If we were to look at units elsewhere in town that wouldn't otherwise be affordable, uppercase or lowercase A, that's an increase in inventory. So I think that's the intent of the language, net increase in inventory.
But, you know, it, it, as I said before, it, it prohibits the affordable units being a part of the project in the direct language as a, as a part of the building. If they wanted to, if they couldn't find any, uh, affordable units to buy somewhere else, then, and they wanted them to be a part of this project, it's in the village busi- business district and it says you can't have affordable units in the business.
No, if the professor contest told you, that's an easy fix. That's not the intent. The intent is to put them elsewhere in the village district outside this building. The whole thing we're talking about is to.
Yeah, and to me, that would be just as good as, as on three A or somewhere else.
John, go ahead. John, Danny.
No, I think, um, again, your decision, you come up with what you're going to do and decide, but you want the best option available, where you want these, um, affordable units. Um, which means whether they're in the village business district or elsewhere, I think you'd want that option. I, I understand and appreciate the concern about cannibalization of going in and saying, guess what? We have some affordable or some rentals that seem to be affordable. I think the fallacy in that you got to think about is that at some point, these buildings are going to be bought up and they're going to be redeveloped. Um, and, you know, um, having that discussion or the, the, um, condition that, you know, we don't want them in the village business district, if that's what's going to happen, um, could be problematic. You might just want them there. And that's why I say you give, you should give yourself the flexibility. What I might suggest to you is maybe the language being the best e- efforts, um, that the applicant will use its best efforts to locate um, the affordable units outside of the village business district. Um, that might give you a little bit more flexibility, whether they're in or out. To, uh, Clark's point, I understand it. They're going to be in there if we don't find one. It's, it's.
No, I know that. I know.
I get your point. I think, you know, putting it on us or others, you know, that we need to use our best efforts to go outside of that district because that's where you would like to try to see it would make sense.
We're, we're, we're already over and I don't want you know, we don't have this language to finalize tonight. Let me, let's, you could just pop the thing up. Uh, back up, Lauren. I mean, what is, does everybody, so the, the, the last condition, I just wanted to specifically reference all the things in Weston and Sampson's. I know it's referenced in the materials, but I I just wanted it to be specifically referenced that everything that Saint Weston and Sampson was recommending or requiring in its peer review would ha- would be conditions of this project. So the only heading I didn't know what it was was five point oh. I didn't have the earlier version of it, but, um, um, as far as back to the affordability one, John Danny's suggestion, okay with everybody. I can live with that, but if we have to, if we have to have a forfeit spoke here, I, I you know, I, I don't want the whole approval to fall on just that one issue. So is everybody?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned about, Tom, because.
Now, I know, I know. So, so this, so again, this isn't going to be in front of us tonight. Are, are we up against a time deadline, Lauren?
So, well, the question I would have for, um, Carolyn, if she could just remind me, if they were to close the hearing tonight and then we could finalize the decision on their next April twenty-sixth meeting, would that be problematic?
It's a special permit. So yes, if we close the public hearing, we still have, I believe, ninety days.
Okay, so we can look at the.
Not that you want to take that.
No, no, but we could look at the language that's going to finally be drafted for twenty-two because again, like Kevin, for example, and Deirdre and Chris, they weren't around for the harbor projects, but I don't even know what that condition are read like. And, and Amy and Clark and I know what it can look like, but, uh, so that's fine. I, I.
I'm okay with this approach.
Yeah, I, 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 I think what.
And finalize the decision.
But to leave it here, Ca- uh, Lauren will take twenty-two, will write it up the way the harbor was done. These other conditions I put in, yes. Uh, and then John's suggestion that it would be you know, strongly encouraged that it not be done to replace units elsewhere in the village, use the word elsewhere. And, and we'll go from there and, uh, we'll have the language circulated and final on the, the twenty-sixth. Does that work for everybody?
You want a motion to close the public hearing?
If I could, please.
Uh, so.
Right, second. Thank you. All right, all in favor of closing the hearing? And essentially, I think we know you, the project's going to be approved with these conditions subject to the rewrite of condition twenty-two. Um, all in favor of, for closing?
Aye, Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye. Amy, I saw you wave. Okay, Judge, you're muted, so.
Aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Heine, aye.
Chris Flex, aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, so we'll have this, the, the written decision will be done by the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, board members.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Carolyn. Have a good night.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, back to the village again. We have a new public hearing. Lauren, would you be so kind to read the notice?
Yes, thank you. Let me pull up that notice.
This is for thirty-one South Main Street.
Notice of public hearing calls the planning board pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight and Section three hundred dash twelve point four, twelve point six and eight, uh, and eighteen of the class of zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing via Zoom webinar ID eight seven eight three one eight zero eight eight two one, password two three zero seven four seven on Wednesday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM on the application of Paul Ford and EMF Rice Realty Trust for a heart, for a Village Business District Special Permit and Site Plan Review Approval. The subject properties are shown on classed assessor's map E five eighteen zero zero seven B, otherwise known as thirty-one South Main Street. The application is for the addition of two residential units, including a seven hundred and twenty-eight square foot one-bedroom unit, a just roughly fifteen hundred square foot one-bedroom unit and a two-car garage to the rear of the existing building. A copy of the application and plans accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Closet Town Hall at forty-one Highland Avenue, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, Tu- Tuesday, eight thirty AM to seven PM, and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM. Electronic versions of application can be obtained by visiting the closet website, planning board active applications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should attend the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Thomas Callahan, Chair.
You're not going to miss that part, are you?
It's getting rusty. It's been a while.
All right, now, and, and I, 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 um, so tonight, we're a little behind schedule. Um, we're, I assume we're sending this to peer review, even though it's not as involved as the project, but Greg, I assume you're here for the applicant. If you could just give us a, an overview of it, we'll take some very initial questions from the public or from board, but um, we're obviously not going to close this tonight.
Great, thank you. Um, for the record, Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer, Morse Engineering. Um, Lauren, if you could also add Paul Ford as a panelist, um, he's the applicant and architectural designer for this project. Um, as was just written to the record, this is a request for a special permit and a site plan review. Um, the property is located at twenty-seven and thirty-one South Main Street um, in the downtown, uh, Village Business District. Existing property today, it's a ten thousand four hundred and fifty-eight square foot lot. It's entirely upland land area. There's no flood plain, no wetlands. Uh, present. It's developed with two buildings. The front one is a mixed-use building, um, at the front of the property. Uh, is the outside-in clothing boutique on South Main Street and behind that uh, is a three-bedroom apartment attached to that. Separately at the extreme back of the property, fronting uh, on Parking Depot is the Fix-It Shop, which exists at the back of this property. The proposal is to construct an addition off of that front building. The addition would extend off the back um, out toward Parking Depot. It would consist of two one-bedroom apartments. Um, those apartments are seven hundred and twenty-eight square feet in size and fourteen hundred and ninety-nine square feet in size.
In, in, in place of the three-bedroom or the three-bedroom staying?
The three-bedroom is staying, so they're in addition. So it would be a total on the site of three residential units in total plus the two commercial spaces that already exist. The floor area for the entire site would be six thousand four hundred and thirty-six square feet. Um, it represents a floor area ratio of zero point six two. One point three is the max allowed by the bylaw, so we're well under on that threshold. Um, parking at the site is accomplished by onsite parking. The requirement in the bylaw is one space for each of the residential units. Um, therefore, we'd be required to have three. We're proposing a total of seven parking spaces. Five of those are outside and two of them are in a two-car garage at the site. The addition, which is the two additional units, complies with zoning setbacks um, on the rear lot line and side lot lines. We comply with the lot coverage at eighty percent lot coverage. Um, in utilities, we have access to municipal water and sewer connections already with the building. Building height, it's a relatively low building. Um, it is two stories. Max height is thirty foot uh, five inches for all intensive purposes. So well under the max height thresholds. I do have the site plans. I do have the architectural plans. Um, I could do a share screen with those if you want to see those, but, um, I'm trying to keep it brief at the request of the chairman. I'll turn it over. Will do.
Chris?
Just briefly, you mentioned the maximum height of the building was thirty and a half feet. Uh, any distinction to be made with the changes in building height measurement? Uh, I can ask the question differently to say, is it thirty and a half feet to the absolute peak of the roof or to the midpoint of a sloped roof?
To the midpoint of the sloped roof.
Thank you.
So this is kind of an aerial view of the site. You have South Main Street where my cursor is here, the intersection of Elm Street. Um, the front portion of this building, again, being the um, outside-in clothing boutique and off the back here being a three-bedroom apartment currently at the back of the site being the Fix-It Shop back here and the town's Parking Depot. Um, out behind that, you'll see that there are two driveways at the site. Currently, there's one off of Parking Depot um, that comes in all the way to the back of the building. Um, that comes in all the way to the back of the building. There is also a second, it's obscured a little bit by the vegetation, but there is a separate driveway. Uh, immediately adjacent to the building right here, um, which provides access to that three bedroom unit. The proposed site plan. Here, again, South Main Street being on the right hand side of the page, this portion being the existing building. The proposal is to add this unit right here, which would be apartment number two. And then this unit right here, which would be apartment number three at the property. Um, access for those two units would be off the back of the property from parking depot. We'd utilize that existing driveway onto the site. Um, providing one parking space, um exterior of this rear unit, providing a parking space exterior of this middle unit. Um, there's two existing parking spaces on the existing driveway for the three bedroom unit uh at the front of the property.
Um, very little, am I correct here that the fix it shop is staying?
Yes, that is correct. The fix it shop stays. That's right here on the plan. Um. All vegetation on the site, you'll see that the property owner previously had planted uh trees along the side lot line along this side. Um, as well as fencing, stockade fence down the sidelines. Same goes on the opposite side. There is landscape, uh tree vegetation and a stockade fence already. Down that northern lot line, um, that would remain in place uh around the building. No changes in topography or grading associated with this site. Um, that would alter drainage patterns or uh create drainage off of the site itself. Looking at the architectural plans, um. Paul might chime in here. Um.
Yeah, the elevations might be helpful. A top that's facing south towards B is, um. You can see how the height. The massing is relatively low. Um. We're not going above the existing structure. Um, and it kind of gets lower as you get to the edge of the property. So it won't be very imposing from the uh parking depot. And the north side, the other side, that's facing the beer garden, the new beer garden. I would say that there's a ten foot fence that's not shown in this elevation that would cover up a bunch of the lower stuff. Um. And yes, and this, the front is not going to be changed where the outside end is. We're not making any changes to Main Street. And the rear elevation is actually set back about thirty feet, and that's what you'll see beyond the fix it shop, just that garage with the one bedroom unit above. So essentially, you have a smaller one bedroom unit and then a larger one bedroom unit. Behind the existing structure with a garage.
That tall thing in the middle is the existing structure?
The existing structure is in the front with the mancered roof and there's a connector piece, a narrow gable piece that will connect it to the existing that will connect it to the new structure.
But that middle section that looks rather high is new.
Uh, this, the part that looks high is a is new, yes.
All right, well, we we get into the.
It is about the same height as the peak, peak to peak. It's about the same as the mancered roof. It's in line with.
No, we'll get into the details of that later, obviously. A Amy, I see your hand up.
Um, yes, I appreciate Mr. Morris's and the property owners descriptions of the project. I would ask that it be detailed in writing to us so that we can follow you in the best manner possible. Um, the description that we often ask for is so abbreviated that we can't determine what. You're asking us to review and then we have to do it in real time and it's often confusing. So the next time we meet, I'd really appreciate a much more detailed description, just as was stated orally in this meeting.
Sure.
Right.
Right, um. You guys all set for the preliminaries?
Well, great. I I got some uh preliminary comments if.
No, I let me, let me just ask the applicant if they've done with the, you know, the presentation.
Yes, I think so.
Okay, Clark, go ahead.
Yeah, so um, you know, generally speaking, um, you know, I'm an architect, so the I I say the design. The generally the massing of the addition uh to the existing building, it 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 looks, it looks pretty good. Um. And, you know, I I think I like how it steps to the to the parking lot. Um, the the things that I'm concerned about, I guess, as an architect and planning board member are the the mechanics that go with taking an old pre pre building code requirement uh building. And adding to uh two units and making it uh a combination of mixed use and. Um, uh having to conform with the uh international building code. Uh, because it's over two, two residential units and I'm I'm wondering. Um. Uh, how those are handled and you don't have to respond right now. You can um think about it for our next meeting. The the auto desk um header on the on the on the plans, it seems a little weird, but um. Paul, you're uh.
Uh, yes, I'm I'm an architect, but I'm not affiliated with anyone right now. I'm doing this for my sister Erica.
Okay, uh, so you're a registered architect in Massachusetts?
I'm not, no.
Okay, are are you registered anywhere?
No, but.
Okay, well, I mean, in this case, they're they're good, since it's it's not one or two family. Um, uh, your sister's gonna have to, you know, have somebody that can stamp the plans. And 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 I will say that. Getting uh fire ratings and and um and building code upgrades is fairly complex with a mixed use building. So that's something to be um be aware of and get a handle on very quickly. Um, in the and the site um plans that Greg Morris did, it there's no real existing condition plans like a survey that we're used to seeing and then uh what's proposed. Um, there's no lot coverage, I don't think indicated anywhere in either the the designer's plans or the engineer's plans. Um. And it didn't look like the garage is is uh part of the of the the uh lot building area square footage, so I'd like that included in an update. Well, the the parking, I'm glad you still have this up. The the parking that you're proposing is problematic. I mean, it. The the back out parking on the South Main Street of these two spots that you're showing in the bottom right corner. Um, it's not great, even if that's the way it's done now. Um, I mean, as a part of this project, I'm not sure the board would be okay with. Uh, saying, yeah, you could continue that for there and then do something else somewhere uh in the back. That 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 other parking spot, the third one from South Main Street that's behind the fence, it looks like you've got like planters or something. And there's absolutely no way you could get the car out of there. Uh, it just looks problematic, um, that particular spot.
Yeah, um. I would say that the where you see the planters, those are flush, um, cobbles, cobblestones.
Drive over it? All right.
Yes, you could.
That looks better than like a fencing here that's that's three feet high, so that that.
Yeah, it's you could drive right over it. Now, what I would like to say is that. I'm only counting four stalls as full sized stalls, the two in the garage. And then the one like kind of behind the garage and then the larger one, you see those three tight ones against. Going into Main Street. I'm not really counting those. We only need three.
Yeah. So it's extra, extra spots.
It's just extra, so I'm not, we're not, we're not saying they're goods.
The re- the reality backing out onto South Main Street might be okay certain times a day or it might be done occasionally now. It's just for this type of special permit. Um, it's, it's definitely not ideal and it is problematic. And and there might be a way to have drive in only and exit out the back uh into the into the parking lot. Um.
There's always a car parked there, at at least at night when you go to B, there's usually a car that's parked there, but.
Sure.
There is.
Sure, um, I just, uh, in terms of what uh the applicant is doing and, you know, tripling the square footage and everything, uh backing out onto South Main Street, even if it was has been done over the last fifty years. Might not be the best um way to uh to to deal with this. I I I think this is a generally, it's a, it's a really good project. It's just technically. Um, a little complex because of the existing conditions and then what you're adding to it. I think there's a solution in there, whether it's um drive in only and drive out the back or uh there's some other other way of um. Of um of managing that. I I'd lead that to the applicant to to consider what might be the best and and what the board might uh be willing to to go along with. But again, I think um Greg Morris's project, his drawing is labeled Z B A something or other, and this isn't the Z B A. Um, so I would like to see an existing conditions plan and then and then a proposed plan, not a combo. Um, from the engineer. Um, and then we definitely, since we're changing the the zoning height, we definitely want to make sure that what you're proposing is below uh the. The the thirty five feet unless, uh, which, you know, it is possible that the. The thirty five foot uh maximum height uh to the peak might not pass on the floor of town meeting, but um. It looks like it. It it's definitely a possibility, so you want to put the the max white, max height since this application is in. At the time or after um the the zoning changes was publicly advertised.
Okay, so there'll be a thirty five foot peak limit in the village?
Yeah, that's, well, everywhere, actually. I mean, that and 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 a fifteen foot for for story and a half in garages and things like that, and that's.
Wow.
That's um, it's not something I'm personally for. It's just that uh.
All right.
Everybody, there there, there's a lot of people that like Tom, Tom's, this was.
Yeah, and we're not going to debate it here, Clark, okay?
I'm not debating it.
I don't appreciate the loud. It's it's. Anyway, Amy.
Um, first off, would you ask everybody else, because I already spoke once?
All right, Clark, were you all set? Like, do you have anything else to add?
Um, I think I did cover the major points.
Okay, and then we're going to have a peer review on this, which I'm probably going to point out a lot of the same things too. Um, Chris and Kevin, uh, any thoughts, comments initially about this?
Um, this is Kevin. Yeah, um, I appreciate the um overview presentation and I don't have any further um comments to um uh pine on at this point.
Chris?
Uh, I think it's got the potential to be a great project. I grew with Clark on a lot of the details to be worked out, parking in particular, but I'm looking forward to hear more about it.
Um, okay, so then I will um maybe reiterate a few things that were discussed that Clark mentioned, but also. Uh, provide a little bit more direction, which is that one of the and 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 I'm going to step back first and and sort of leave the building aside. What we have operating in that environment right now are local businesses. And uh, some of them are uh well situated, they own their property and a lot of them don't. One of the things we want to encourage is is that we do renovations in the in the the downtown. Um, business district is that we keep our people who are currently creating jobs in those positions. And so I I want the, I would really recommend that the um uh applicant think about that in terms of the kinds of complexity that will arise as a project unfolds. And I ask um really not to put you on the spot, but say it'd be really helpful if we knew that you were already talking to people and they know what's going to happen. Because moving around in a small town with very little uh vacant space that's already built is a pretty difficult thing. I reiterate the comment about the existing conditions. Uh, we really need much greater detail. We need to understand. The physical setting, we need to understand the utility connections, we need to understand the setbacks, we need to understand essentially from. Ground zero up exactly what we're working with, because then we can be a better partner in helping you figure out your project. Um, uh, another comment is that this is an area in town where there is a complex draining system, drainage system. That is related to how the whole downtown from the south to the north actually drains. So it's really important that you get in engaged with somebody, and I'm sure Greg Morris can help you. Uh, uh greatly on this as to what is underneath the buildings you're talking about, how close they are to existing town infrastructure and what kind of um. Uh, uh, actions need to be taken in the design process to to account for the infrastructure that's there. Um, and then finally, we do have an impacted town parking area. And we have a lot of debates about that, but when it's all said and done, we find that if you go in at seven or eight or nine in the morning, it's completely packed. And if you go in at five and six at night, it's completely packed. And so thinking in terms of the consequences of how changing the land use as it is to something else will impact existing town parking infrastructure. Because we right now have a shortage of that. So my recommendation would be that you work carefully with Cassandra and our other technical support staff to figure out. Um, the set of issues that you're confronting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have anybody from the public who wants to speak about this? And see anybody with a hand raised? Lauren, what would be the plan to have this reviewed? Who would we be sending this to?
I would suggest that we use Amory engineers for this project. Pat Branson has been before the board before on some of the sort of smaller scale project that we've seen in the village and um, you know, he's. I believe actually that we had reached out to him before I left, when we knew this project was coming in to sort of queue him up, so he was prepared. It was just a matter of confirming that the board did want to move forward with a peer review on this project.
Not Weston and Sampson, since they just did a village project?
More expensive.
Yeah, they, I, I think there's a scale issue.
It wasn't me.
Well, I mean, you know, we, what we, our job is to make it possible for somebody to do something, and this is an exploratory. Project. They have very little information that they've given to us to make any decision about anything, so.
Amy, by choice, I'd ask them to just give a preliminary review of the project because I know we're going to send this out for peer review. If 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 everybody's comfortable with Amory, since it is a smaller scale project, that's fine.
Sounds good.
And then I think we shoot what our meeting schedule in May is what, May, I know you said something today about changing it.
Yes, so this, I don't want to bog this application down with this, but the the May meetings that the board was having, May tenth, you don't have anything planned yet. In terms of new applications and May twenty fourth, you can't have, we have to reschedule it. Because you don't have staff to support you that night. We could do the seventeenth or thirty first, but then that sort of brings the whole May schedule into. Confusion, so what we.
We have large home reviews on the tenth?
I know you have large home reviews on April twenty sixth. What you could do right now is continue this application until the twenty sixth, allow them to submit new information if they so choose. And we can anticipate that with a peer review needed, you'll be pushing into May for that peer review, but in the meantime, we don't have to. Place schedule with the applicant here, if that's acceptable for people.
I mean, so Greg, you know, you're going to get some other comments from peer review, but you've heard a lot tonight that board members would like to see that. If if that's an acceptable schedule, we'll continue this to the twenty sixth and then see where we are.
Yeah, I I wonder if it's worth even coming in on the twenty sixth, honestly. Um, I hear the request for the additional information and we can pull that together in the next couple of days and get that in. Um, I doubt Amory would have a chance to even look at it before the twenty sixth, so.
All right.
Um, why don't we continue it out till after Amory has had a chance to review it?
Can we can continue it to the tenth then, Lauren?
So, uh, yes, but then you have to have a meeting on the tenth if that's okay with you, so.
Right now for me, we're scheduled for what?
The tenth.
The tenth, all right, that, so we'll do the tenth.
That's like a week after town meeting, right?
Right.
Yeah, so.
We're, we're going to post town meeting as a meeting for us in case we have to do any quickie votes, but uh. We'll do the tenth and then you're telling us the twenty fourth is out because of staff, so we either then have to choose the seventeenth or the thirty first for our second. Maybe.
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, let's, can I have a motion to continue this to the uh May tenth at six thirty?
So moved.
Okay, second, thank you. All in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Chris Black, aye.
Okay, good, and then we'll send it to Amory engineer and let's try to, you know, Greg, get it. To what you want to add to it as quickly as possible. So Amory has the time to be prepared on the tenth to have something for us, um.
We will. Thank you very much for comments.
All right, thank you, all right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next we have a public hearing, not under the zoning bylaw, under the scenic bylaw, Lauren, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, notice of public hearing class of planning board pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty and Section two twenty-eight dash sixteen of the class of zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing via Zoom webinar ID eight seven eight three one eight zero eight eight two one password two three zero seven four seven on Wednesday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM for an application for a scenic road work permit for property being shown on Coasette Assessor's Map D twelve seventeen eight, otherwise referred to as three fifty-five Jerusalem Road, Coasette, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. The application is to review tree work slash removal to five damaged or declining trees on a scenic road. A copy of the application of plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Coasette Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue in Coasette, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I'm sorry, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, Tuesday, eight thirty AM to seven PM and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting the Coasette Massachusetts Planning Board active application page. Any planning, any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should attend the virtual meeting at the time designated, sign Thomas J. Callahan, chair. Um I will note for your purposes, uh you have Andrew Swanson and Chris Murray here of the Public Works Department. Because um for scenic roads, it's actually it involves the tree warden as well, so they're here to speak to any questions. They didn't have any comment on the application itself particularly before it came to you, but they're here if you have any questions for them. And I will also uh promote the applicant, who's Mike Hillsinger.
Can can I start with a question? This troubled me when I saw this, and it's a question for Carolyn. These are trees that are on town property. Correct? In in the right of way.
Carolyn, you're muted.
Oh. Okay, well, Lauren, these are trees in the right of way, correct?
Yes, so the reason why scenic road scenic road applications rarely come to you because they are only for trees in the town right of way along a scenic roadways, so we only have five designated scenic roadways and
And we also have, in my view, utilities in the town that's not complying.
The the reason why you don't see, because you asked me this earlier, why you don't see so many applications, is because, one, some people in the general public just don't know that, see, just because you're on a scenic road, it doesn't protect the trees and stone walls on private property along the scenic road, so we often have people come to the town, they get a designation, they realize that those features are on their property and it no longer applies to the scenic road bylaws, they're allowed to sort of do as they please. It's when they're doing a driveway or something that comes through the scenic road that we often see it. Um you know, we saw that, for example, another Jerusalem Road property wanted to add another emergency access roadway and they wanted to disturb a stone wall, so they came to the board. This i- in this situation, the property owner came to the town a- asking to do that, to do some maintenance on these trees. We typically send the tree warden out to look at these sites if it's considered an immediate hazard and it's of public safety concern. They have through the separate state, uh and I'm forgetting, I want to say it's chapter eighty-seven something. But it's something under the tree warden powers that allow them to act without sort of superseding the public hearing situation, so it it's few and far between that you will see these applications just sheerly because of the nature of which the jurisdiction lies and also you just don't have that many scenic roads. But here is an example of tree work and the town right of way that's not considered an immediate hazard. And that's why it didn't come through that way for you to consider um. That's for the synopsis.
I I guess, thank you, I I appreciate that, but Carolyn, shouldn't the applicant be the town? The town is, the town is the owner of these.
Correct, so I was looking to see if we have anything. I mean, it Lauren is correct that the statute only applies to work that's actually being done within the right of way. That's the only, you know, requirement for jurisdiction with the board. Um but yes, there has to be some kind of coordination with the town because this is technically within our property.
Yeah. Who's gonna actually do the work?
Uh this is Mike Hillsinger, I'm uh the applicant and uh representing the owner here. So I am at uh one twenty-four Norwell Avenue, Norwell. Uh but I'm the property manager here, so uh I have a couple of things to add to these comments. The um the work would be done uh by Total Tree, Andrew Spalt, who does quite a bit of work in Coasette. Uh he's the one who flagged the uh most dangerous of the trees uh first. Uh insofar as the roadway right of way is concerned, I really would like to um talk to the board a little bit more about it because in the bylaws, there is no real definition for the roadway right of way width. Um the uh scenic roadway uh bylaw says, uh I'm just gonna read a little excerpt from it. Um uh scenic road work permit must be obtained from the planning board to complete any work to be done within the right of way. The right of way is considered to be the area on and within the legal boundaries of a scenic road or not on private property. Uh my understanding is that most roadway right of ways extend onto private property uh in the case that the town may want to uh expand the roadway down the road, add a sidewalk, that sort of thing. Um so there's really no definition for the actual width of the roadway right of way, I talked to.
The 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 definition is on the road, the layout for that road, the records of which are either in town hall and or up at the Norfolk County Engineers in Dedham.
Okay.
It it is defined, it's some sometime someday is somebody laid out that road and that's the right of way.
Okay.
And it's not necessarily, the pavement is not necessarily centered within it, so
That's correct.
Not a guide all the time. But I I I'm just, I mean, I hate to be a stickler about this, but just the legalities of this, this is town property, the town should be the applicant.
Well, and and that's where I'm wanting to discuss.
And it might just be a question of the manning their signatures to your client's applicant uh signature on the application. I guess I don't care if an abutter is, but the abutter does not own this. And the abutter absent town permission doesn't have any right to take these trees down.
Well, that's where I wanted to talk about uh two of these trees are clearly outside of the roadway right of way. Uh I've included them only out of an abundance of caution since we're we're planning to do some work. I didn't want anybody to stop and say, hey, wait a minute, you can't do this. Um and if we were to look at the drawings, I could show you two of the trees are twenty-five feet from the center line of the street. Um and the uh roadway right of way more than likely never exceeds forty feet. So it'd only be twenty feet from the center line, and again, not that the center line always represents the center.
I I mean, you're saying you don't know where the right of way is, do you know where the right of way is? I mean, so these two trees may be within the right of way, they may not be. And if they're not, not, you know, the private property, they can knock themselves out and do what they want. I is there, is there a plan or a sketch that we can seize to what, where these?
Yes, could I share a screen? So you haven't seen what was submitted, I'm assuming.
I haven't seen it myself, no, but for the benefit of anybody watching us, you can have it up on the screen.
Okay, let's see, I have to move this. Okay. Uh are you seeing the photograph now?
Yep.
Okay. So uh what I've done is labeled the trees uh from left to right along the street uh just for clarity. Tree one, no work planned, uh it's just here for clarity. T two is the tree that is the most dangerous, it's the one that was flagged uh by Andrew Spalt. And is the one that we need to remove uh for structural purposes, and I I'll show you in the further details that further along. Uh T three, same thing, structural damage to the tree, uh which we can talk about. Those are the two trees that are twenty-five feet uh from the center line of the road. There's five trees uh in total uh that are in these photographs that uh we're discussing. So T four has a bad leader, uh it splits and then comes hangs out over the roadway. Um that leader is something that we propose to remove uh for structural purposes, again, before that gets too large and the tree splits and it falls into the roadway. Uh T five here, we're planning no work, again, that's very close to the road. And T six uh has a broken uh crown that we wanted to prune. So it's not tremendous work necessarily, uh but I see your point about who owns what. I've included this next cluster, T seven through T fourteen, just to give perspective of the total number of trees on the lot and their proximity to the ones that we are doing work on. So going back then uh to the details of the damaged tree. This is the most dangerous tree, it's very uh very damaged in the in the crown. Uh it's dying, uh mostly dead at this point. Has great big uh piece down the side that is rotten.
Excuse me, Mike, Mike, what 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 kind of tree is it, like a maple oak and ash, what is it?
I I believe that most of these are ash trees.
Yeah. Well, you know, I've had, I I have on my property a dozen or more ash trees and and frankly, they're all dying.
Correct.
Um one after the other, it's 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 kind of upsetting.
Well, from what I understand, there is an insect uh that lays eggs and the spores uh are under the bark and they do all the damage.
Sure.
Um so this tree you can see also has a split down uh one side. Oh, sorry, I'm on T T three, so T two, I want to stick to T two, the damaged trunk. The crown, it it it's dropping uh good sized limbs on a regular basis, so that's that's the one that Andrew pointed out. And then the one that's next to it, uh T three, sorry, I gotta get this off the screen. Um this one has a a split trunk, which you can see down here. Uh and on the opposite side, rotten at the base. So two two dangerous trees, uh you know, we'd much rather keep the trees, uh but they're just not healthy. And they pose a danger to the the street itself. And this is the uh third one, this would be uh T uh four. And same problem here, uh this is going to develop a split at some point because this leader that's coming off and leaning over the street is going to get too large and is gonna at some point fall into the street. Uh and then this is T six, T five is no work, that's the no work tree. The same thing here, you can see all the damage in the crown up here where it's lost major limbs uh that have come down, this tree we don't want to take down, it's still relatively healthy. We just want to clean it up inside, but because again, it's on the scenic roadway, uh we want to uh get approval before we do any work to it. So that's really the extent of the work, it's it's not tremendous, um but in our opinion, it's, we looked at it as our responsibility, it sounds like maybe it's the town's responsibility, or at least uh the town needs to sign off on it, I'm not sure how we want to handle that. Uh but here we are uh to discuss this.
But eh eh before I get to Carolyn, are are my, right here, should we, is is this the town that should be making this application?
Either the town makes the application or the town, it you know, gives consent, but you know, to to your point, Tom. It's it's one thing if we're talking about the trees that are just outside the right of way that might have branches that are over the right of way. But it's another thing altogether, if these trees, you know, we need to know where the layout is and need to know what trees actually fall within the layout. Um and there has to be a conversation with the town as to if it if this is on our property, who is doing this work?
Well, yeah, I mean, I it's up, if the town wants to sub it out to the lit property owner, you know, that's fine, that that's other legal things that you and the town manager have to worry about, but I just want to make sure we get this right, uh the town should have or know how to get the layout of this road, so we know what's what.
Right.
You know, and if they're dangerous trees, I have no problem taking them down, but I I was gonna, my next question is, under the bylaw, there's a provision for restoration and replacement of what's taken down, is that in the plan, Mr. Hillsinger? The ones that would be removed.
Well, again, we would like to replace these trees, we like the trees, we like the location of the trees. Uh one of the things that I would like to have definition of, uh you know, or more clarity on the roadway right of way is where it is exactly, because if we're going to replant, I would like to replant them outside of the roadway right of way. Uh I can't plant in the same location for obvious reasons, those stumps would would prohibit that, but uh with no no issue replanting, uh I would just like to define better uh where that roadway right of way is so that we can uh stay outside of it.
Cross the bridge later as to whether you'd have to replant since they're town trees and put them back on town property, but
Yeah.
All right, uh is Mr. Swanson's the representative of the town, can we can we promote him for a moment?
Andrew Swanson and Chris Murray both have ability to talk if they.
Oh, okay, um. Can they find the layout?
You could either get get the road layout or
Yeah, it's it's either in town.
Layout of the house, I mean, because the house is on a lot and it abuts a right of way, so either one would give you the answer that you need as to where the where the property line is.
No, the 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 plans at the Registry of Deeds won't show that. They'll they'll show it abutting a road, but not necessarily the right of way layout. Because it might be two different.
It it would show where the private way is, which should be the start of the right of way. Where where the private property is, which should be the same as where the right of way starts.
All right, well, Mr. Murray, Mr. Swanson, does, can you get the layout of the right of way in this location? Hello?
They're here, but I don't know, they have the ability to talk.
Uh Amy has the ability to talk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. See if we have a voice, let me see if we have a voice from the town.
Okay.
Mr. Murray or Mr. Swanson, can you unmute yourselves?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Here, Chris.
This this is Chris Murray. Um so we we go off of the assessor's map that, you know, obviously we are not surveyors, so we go, we do the best of our abilities. Um and that that is the extent that that we have, um so we went out and measured the tree that is is um marked in orange tape. And that that was on the line between private property and the town's right of way.
How do you know that if you don't know where the right of way is?
Well, we I went off of the map that I was given, um.
Well, the assessor's map isn't going to do it, with all due respect.
Yeah, so I and again, we we just go all with the best of our ability and that's that's really all that that we can do, you know, I mean.
All right, well, the 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 town has layouts of all of its roads. Uh probably some are better than others because some were doing more modern times than others. And they're they're in, they're in the basement up in Dedham at the Norfolk County Engineers. And that's where they're usually kept, if not in the town records itself. Um I don't, I I I'm just a little flabbergasted that when we're doing work on roads, we don't even know where the layout is. That seems to me a preliminary question whether we're putting in utilities or anything else. Because we need to know, like, for example, the water work being done on Beachwood down near my house. How do we know we're going on private property or we're working in public property and let me know where the layout is? I these are, these are easy, well, maybe they're not easily defined, but they're definable things, Amy, please.
Um I walk that path by tho- that house and those trees probably four times a week. And I would say that that is a very interesting um landscape because it comes up on a hill, houses have been built over time. And uh so it is indistinguishable as to what might be the public space and the private space. In order for the public to be informed about what is important, we need to do our own work. We need to actually know what is our responsibility and then what is their responsibility. So my recommendation would be is not to try to figure it out here, because we can't do that. We actually have to have somebody within our own organization assess exactly what the the land ownership situation is, why does it matter? Because the ash borer that is potentially infecting these trees is all over New England. They they uh they are deteriorating at a very rapid pace and lots of communities are stuck with trying to deal with these. residual trees that have been marooned literally adjacent to public right of ways, so I think it's our responsibility to first figure out for what we are responsible for. And then return to the owner and say, here's your responsibility.
Well, the whole bylaw, the whole bylaw relies on, on the property line between right of way and private property, so, uh, we, we need to, we need to know where, you know, how to readily uh, get our right of way boundaries, um, and I get, I just, I'm just a little taken aback that we don't have that easy capability, Kevin?
Um, a, a third party reviewer, consultant should be able to readily identify this. Um, we have those on staff for third party reviews, so let's just get them on, make that definition for.
I, I don't, I don't want to put an, a private abutter to that expense.
Well, I'm not saying who.
Well, because this is, this is, again, we're talking about trees that are on town property because that's only where our jurisdiction lies and, and, and I want to once again say to everyone, I am not trying to hold this up. I just want to get this legally right because, you know, it's a precedent for working with this bylaw. Um, the town should be the applicant here, these are town owned trees. The town can delegate the work to whoever it wants as far as I'm concerned, but the town should know where the property is and what is theirs and what is a private owners. The private, if it's found to be on the private owner's property, we don't have a bylaw that protects trees in general, so they can do what they'd like. Uh, but again, th- this is, it should be easily determined, I, I mean. I don't know, but, but, but maybe I'm.
You know, it's like fences, Tom, without a real survey and a surveyor who has a license and stakes out where the property line is and then you, you're kind of shooting in the dark.
I know, and but it's not, it's up to the applicant to get that information.
We were to assume that the, the both, the both trees that they're proposing to take down straddle the property line in the right of way. Um, then, um, then, then they're both sort of, you know, the, the, the property owner doesn't want the trees to fall or be a, a hazard. Um, um, and be blamed for anyone being hurt, so, I mean, I think if they're, they're motivated enough to take the trees down, whether they're, you know, they're trees wholly, um, or not, I I think that's fine, but maybe we should continue this and let the applicant and his representative and, uh, um, tree warden, uh, pow wow a little bit about this and see if there's more information that could be, um, obtained.
Yeah, I have a question for Carol, I, I, I have a question based off your comments for Carolyn, but I see Chris, Chris and Lauren had their hand up as well, so. Yeah, I, I hear, I hear what you say, Clark, and I think that's where we're heading, but I, I also you know, the, the, what your comment brings up is do we make an assumption here that these are town trees and we regulate that and issue a permit? Okay, is assumption good enough legally for us going forward?
No, and I think what we do is we send the, the applicant and the, the representative back to, to pow wow with the, the tree warden and, and and the, the vendor for, for cutting the trees down, uh, ahead of coming back to us.
Yep, I agree, Chris.
Or, or even DPW and, and, you know, town engineer, somebody's got these plans for the layout, I would imagine, uh, you know, somewhere at, you know, at a town office, they aren't just at the registry of deeds.
Well, this might, this might be a problem of us not having a town engineer for the last year and a half, but, but I don't know what DPW has or doesn't have and what the division of duties between them and the town engineer were, but we don't have a town engineer right now.
I, I did, I did speak with DPW and was unsuccessful at getting any substantive answer.
Then, then, then you'll have to search the records at the Norfolk County Engineering Department, which is in the basement of the registry of deeds and.
Well, they should have the plans online, Tom. Right?
Well.
They got all the plans online.
You might assume that the Norfolk County is in the twenty-first century, but I wouldn't assume that, uh.
No, I'm not assuming anything, I'm just saying they probably have them online. I mean, ninety percent sure that the, these drawings are available online, it's just an Easter egg hunt trying to find them.
Yeah, Chris.
Does the problem go away if the applicant and the town agree on a plan regardless of what side of the line the trees are on?
I don't know, Carolyn, like that goes back to my question. Can we issue a permit under, uh, uh, that kind of condition where they just agree that the, the line is somewhere?
I think we could do something like that if we can't definitively uh, and expeditiously figure out the layout boundaries, I think if the town becomes a co-applicant then the trees being removed are either on town property and being removed with the permission of the town. Or they're private trees on private property to which the scenic bylaw doesn't apply. But the applicant is here anyway, and we wouldn't take any action with respect to those, you know, we're not, we're not gonna take any enforcement action. Um, since the applicant is here seeking permission, um. It's unfortunate the applicant got nowhere with DPW, um, so my next suggestion would be the town manager.
All right, so.
Maybe we work out some kind of a co-app.
All right, so the suggestions you're being offered and, and we can do this, I think, rather quickly, Lauren, tell me if I'm wrong, to schedule this for April twenty-sixth, but, um. Your choices are either go up to Dedham and find the layout. And show us that definitively where the boundary line is, or speak to the town manager and the DPW and come to an agreement with the town. That will allow this board to issue a permit and that you're gonna take them down and, you know, under the bylaw. We could probably be looking at restoration of those two at least. Not, not the crown one and not the one with the, just one branch being taken off, but the two that are being completely removed, I think we'd be looking for replacement. And we may be doing a replacement that's on private property, but everybody's agreeing with attorney Murray is suggesting that we can all do this. And we can get this done at our next meeting.
Um, I'd like to. I'd like to.
I'm sorry, wait, hold on one second, Amy, Carolyn.
I, sorry, I, just one other thought, um, I was going through the comments and I know that the tree warden and the tree and park foreman offered no comments. But while we have them here tonight, do we at least want them to comment upon, do they agree that some of these trees are, you know, damaged, unhealthy and really are posing an imminent threat that they should be removed?
Yes. Andy, um, the tree warden for the town, I'm a certified master arborist, if a tree is a hazard, I can, I can remove it. You know, I don't need a shade tree hearing act, I'm an MCA, I've been with the town twenty-three years. There's one tree that's on town property that is hazard, you guys saw the, um, the pictures, needs to come down. Hello?
Yeah, and, and, and then, and the difference between operating under this bylaw or not is whether we get a replacement tree.
Well, I like a replacement tree, but me being a certified arborist, and you have a hazardous tree, they come to me, I assess it. You know, I don't want anyone ever to get hurt, anything like that, I will remove the tree.
All right, Amy?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion, if I can, that, uh, we refer this to the town arbor and in conjunction with the town manager to determine the path that would, uh, create the best outcome. And that would include the owner of the property if there, if the tree is on the owner, uh, owner's property or whether or not the town is responsible. So I would say refer this back to a joint discussion between the arborist, the owner and the, uh, town manager for relief and review.
Okay.
All right, but I would, I would also continue the hearing to the twenty-sixth, so if they're coming back here, we can move this along expeditiously.
But you're second?
Yeah, well, I'm amending it to, to also continue.
I accept the amendment.
Okay, thank you, all right. I'll, I'll, I'll second your motion, so. Uh, anybody else have any discussion from the board?
All in favor?
Uh, Lauren, wait, hold, Lauren, you had your hand up earlier, is there anything you wanted to add to this before we?
No, nothing added, me brother, at this point, thank.
All in favor of that motion to both, uh, send this back to the town and the applicant to work out jurisdiction and to continue this hearing to April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty. Uh, all in favor?
I.
I'm Callie and I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin, hi, hi.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just for the, for the applicant's benefit for Mike, um, what I'm gonna recommend, I no longer am with the town day to day, I'm just serving interns since they left a few months ago, but what I will suggest for you is I'm gonna update the assistant town planner Cassandra on where this left off, you can reach out directly to her for the main point of communication for the town right now, and we will, between her and I, will coordinate with you on how we can move forward for the twenty-sixth.
Okay, great, thank you.
Welcome.
And Chris Black, I.
Thank you, all right, thank you all, thank you guys, sorry that this is a jurisdictional mess, but I want to get this right.
But thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
It's a very windy road.
Yeah, and we, and we should know where the layout is with all due respect.
But it'll be a good test for us to know these things.
Anyway, all right, let's move on, um. We have one more item of business before we go to executive session, there's nobody out there in the public, but we're gonna conclude our regular business and when we go to executive session, we're not gonna come back into uh, regular session, so. The only other item we, uh, Judge Cutler suggested is reaffirm our vote in support of Article eight of the zoning bylaw. Uh, when we met with ZBA at their request, we made one little change. Um, currently, the initial determination of whether there's an extension of a non-conforming use is made by the building inspector. And Judge Cutler had drafted it in such that there would be, that preliminary decision would be made by the zoning board. And, and they said, why change what's been working, so if the language has been changed back. So that preliminary decision is made by the, uh, building inspector rather than the zoning board, obviously, if somebody challenges the building inspector's decision, it goes into the whole zoning board process, so.
What, what, what is this article?
This is on Article eight, the non-conforming article. Let me, let me see if I have it easy available.
Yeah, if you could just put it up on the screen, so we.
Uh, let me, yeah, let me hold on a sec. Zoom. Share screen. It's right, right here in what would be the new eight point three. So the, the red language that was crossed out basically was putting the initial decision of what's uh, an, an, um, an extension or an alteration in the hands of the zoning board rather than the building inspector, so. It's going back to existing practice, and that was just, it hadn't come up in any discussions, it was just something in the ju, the judge did when she was redrafting Article eight. Zoning board caught it and they just asked to leave the existing process in place.
Sounds good.
We thought that was fine, so she just, you know, we're, we're, we're reported as a six zero voter approving Article eight and she just asked that we reconfirm that vote with that minor change, so. I could have a motion to, um, reconfirm our support for Article eight amendments as drafted.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Buck Brewer, I.
Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin, hi, hi.
Chris Black, I.
All right, thanks. Uh, any minutes?
No, there's no minutes tonight.
Okay, any other business for open session before we go to executive session? All right, with that, um, we don't need a motion to adjourn that part, do we?
No, you just need to, um, state the reason why you are suggesting open to executive session.
Right, so, um. Make a motion that we proceed to executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation. Any more specifics needed, Carolyn?
Yes, yeah, it's actually gonna discuss the matter of KD custom builders versus the planning board relative to ninety-four Black Horse Lane. And, uh, and Chair, you need to make a determination that having this discussion in open session could have a detrimental effect on the board's litigating position.
Just me, does that?
Yes.
But I make that determination that I think is detrimental to us to this, to discuss the matter.
So are we to, wait a minute, are we supposed to go to the uh, exclusive executive session website now?
Yes, you're all going, you're all going to get off, you're off of, you, leave this zoom here.
Yeah, I, I, I'm set up to do it, I just needed to.
And then we, we, we reconnect through the executive session thing, so with the motion to go into executive session without us returning to this regular session, uh, can I have a second on it?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Buck Brewer, I.
Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin, hi, hi.
Chris Black, I.
Okay, so we'll give you five, ten minutes, we'll see you in a little bit.